Counsel, back in January. And tonight, we actually have William Harrell, CEO and President of HRT along with staff, to join in to do a comprehensive discussion about the bus transfer station. We also have a brief presentation on recycling, an update on seeing disabled real estate tax leave program, and then there are two items on the agenda tonight that we have, two or three slides to discuss those agenda items. Mayor, before I turn it back over to you, there are just two housekeeping issues. One is that, I guess over the last 20 months, we've had a series of joint work sessions. Last week, we talked a bit about having the school board and the council for the joint work session. The date that works for the school board is the 20th of November. That's the first available date that would work for them. We do have three boards or commissions to have joint meetings with for the last quarter of the year. We have the housing authority that would be queued up for next week, and we would have on the November work session, the Norfolk Public Schools. And then lastly, in December, we would have a recap with the community services board. That one's pending, I believe that that's going to work. And that would, to let you know of the course of the last 20 months, that would be the third meeting with the housing authority. It would be the fifth meeting with Norfolk Public Schools. Then it would be the second meeting with NSCP. So, as Winter has sent an email to the council members about different items that you would like to discuss, I just wanted to give you an update on our progress with various boards and commissions. And then lastly, in your packet that you received during the retreat, I think it was TAP 19, there was a draft proposal for next year's meetings. As council meetings, as you know, that there are 36 times during the year that we're, the council is required to meet. The last year, we gave that to you in December to review. We wanted to give you more lead time. It's not as simple as, because of holidays and breaks, it's not as simple as the first Tuesday is a work session, the second Tuesday is a voting meeting, and the fourth Tuesday is a voting meeting. We looked at this last 12 months, and that hasn't always been the case. So, we wanted to give you some time to just to take a look at it over the next few weeks, so that when we get to December, that we're able to make sure that we're still having those 36 meetings during the year, including the work sessions. But to give you more time to really to assess some of our challenges with holidays, and how it's always not as simple to have that first Tuesday being the work session, and the second and fourth Tuesdays being voting meetings. So, just as something to contemplate in the course of next month.
Mr. Manager, before we have these joint meetings, when we get an agenda, I guess in a way in advance, whereas we will be able to vet those issues so that those meetings can be substantive.
Yes, sir.
In terms of what we talk about, because I know we met with Norfolk redevelopment Housing Authority, but we never get to the meat of some of the conversations we need to have with them.
Sir. I had a conversation with Mrs. Montgomery before you left.
Okay. So, is the meeting at 2:00 with NRHA then, next Tuesday?
Yes.
And then the last Tuesday, we have a meeting, right?
The last Tuesday, we-
The 30th of October is the meeting.
So, okay.
Thank you.
If it's possible, can you send out an updated calendar just for the rest of this year?
Turns out the school board was going to some state like conference, so there's something that they literally could not work around, so the 30th, what like thing.
That's all.
Yeah. Thanks.
Yeah, we'll get back to it.
We don't feel like, they really, so.
We've got to wash our hair.
All right, Mr. Riddick?
Yeah. Last week, I brought up an issue that has sort of taken on a life of its own now. Square Deal Barber Shop in Dr. Phaeton's office building. Got a call from Dr. Phaeton today, which indicated something that I didn't know, and I don't think we knew, that the housing authority sold him the entire parking lot. And so now, Square Deal Barber Shop is virtually out of business when it comes to parking. But I think we've identified a piece of property markets at 712 B Avenue that the city owns, that we can try to, you know, get either crushed rock or some type of service and a curb cut in there as a temporary fix. But there's also a piece of property at A Avenue and Church Street. It's a big piece of vacant land, and I don't know who that belongs to. But if that belongs to the city, and we can create a parking lot there, not only would it help Square Deal Barber Shop, but it would take, it would help Dr. Phaeton's efforts as well. One of the problems with Dr. Phaeton and their parking lot is that he's not able to put a retention part in there, so he has to put some type of underground, you know, to kind of accommodate that. And that's going to cause him to close that parking lot down. So, as it stands there, Square Deal Barber Shop has no place for parking, and plus they have residents that live up above the barber shop, and so they're out of business as well. So, I think it's something we get on right away.
Okay.
That's it. I don't have any further questions.
Just very quickly, we, I met with the biking commission that met last week, and Brian is already on top of this, but you might notice for the legislative package, that we've asked for a resolution to see if we can get some continued state funding for maintenance of bike lanes. And so, if you see that as part of the legislative proposal, that's where that's coming from. So, I appreciate Brian's, I just went to talk to him about it today, and he's already done it, so that was great.
He got his attention.
Didn't get my part already done.
Didn't have you. He must be on.
This is the big one.
This is going to be the big one.
Okay.
A few months ago, probably maybe three or four months ago, and some time ago, I asked for a city employee audit. And I talked to John Sandolin about it, and then I read in the newspaper that it had been discussed, and that there's some other measure in place that we have that will do the same thing. So, I'd like to know what that is. I'd just like to report on, you know, what other measure we have in place to make sure that everybody we have employed for us is actually accounted for and showing up, you know, showing up for. Because what I wanted did not require KPM money, it just simply required, you know, people to be responsible for the people that are in their supervisory role. Team leaders being responsible for their team members, department heads being responsible, I mean, you know, that kind of thing. For somebody to say, I know who these people are, they work for me, I've seen them, talked to them, whatever the case may be, to decide off on it.
Sure.
You know, nothing extensive, you know, but if we have something that's better, I'd like to, you know, know what that is. And I'd also like to commend the police chief and the staff that he had at the NAACP Freedom Fund banquet on Saturday. A lot of times, we send people to functions, and they leave his entire table stayed for the entire event. And the NAACP executive board commented on that, and they were very pleased with that, so thank you.
Tommy?
I'm going to bring up your favorite company, Dominion Power. I was alerted quite a bit ago from Public Works that Dominion Power would be replacing the lines, the transfer lines that run through Ward 5 along Little Creek Road, and actually go into Ward 3 through Tanner's Creek in that way. I don't know if Berkeley, if you've been involved in any of the conversations. There was kind of no conversation about it, and then Dominion Power had an advertisement for a public hearing, which they held at Norfolk Botanical Gardens, out of all places, when there's plenty of schools that are around there. And I know this isn't necessarily a city issue until, I guess, was it Wavy or somebody did a story about, you know, the pools that people were granted easements, or something happened with it. But now it's starting, I'm starting to get the emails from people who don't even live along this, upset that this is happening, requests about power lines being buried. Why can't Dominion Power bury these, that they have, you know, this? I think that maybe instead of letting Dominion Power kind of take control over this, maybe we might even get a little bit involved in this. And I don't know how much Public Works has been doing. I'm sorry, I haven't communicated with John on this. I'm just wondering where we are with it before this. We always get blamed for everything, so I think just having a clear picture or understanding of what Dominion Power is doing, what our obligations are, if there is any, as a city, and just clear up some of the issues that are happening, and communicate with the community that's around there. Like I said, they had a public hearing, and to put it in the botanical gardens was odd when there's Larry Moore Elementary, Zaya Guard, a bunch of elementary and middle schools that they could have held this, that'd be a little bit more accessible and easier for people. I even had one person, they thought they had the paid admission to get into the meeting at the Tampa Gardens, you know. A little bit silly there, but just, I think that's the type of things that we're dealing with with Dominion Power, and want to make sure that this is done right, and people understand what's happening with this.
I spoke with Bob Rodalme on that issue, so if you need to, they need to get people out again anywhere they will.
Okay, we have a couple ceremonial things tonight. Correctress reminded me for the Kamos attorney. It's in.
Okay. Let's say, Mayor and Council, I'll try to tee it up in terms of an update with the bus transfer station. We'll do this in three parts. I will provide you with a backdrop of where we've been. And then, from an operational standpoint, HRT, and I've mentioned William Harrell is here today with Ray Almaruso, we'll talk a bit about the operational leads. And then John Kiefer will talk about the actual implementation going forward. So, what they said, I think I have a clicker somewhere around here. Okay. Basically, a couple things occurred. Back in January, we provided you with a briefing and a position on relocating the Cedar Grove Transfer Station to the Downtown Plaza site. After that time, there was a subsequent community conversation in April, where we collected additional information and had additional analysis. And I'll tell you, the bottom line upfront, that after that additional analysis, the recommendation remains the same, that the relocation occur to the Downtown Plaza site. But we want to give you a little bit of a background of how we got to that point. As you may recall, the Wells Fargo Building, when that was constructed, that required the movement of the bus transfer station from the Charlotte and Wood Street site to the temporary site of Cedar Grove. And again, this is 2008, and that's a temporary site. And I know you're saying, well, this is four years later, and we're still talking about that being a temporary site. But one of the issues with the Cedar Grove site, there are a number of issues, but the key ones here, that there's no, there's a lack of visibility, there are no restrooms. And one thing that we heard very loud and clear in January was that individuals should be treated with dignity and respect. And it's very clear that at that current site, that's not occurring. There are public safety concerns, and maybe just as important, it's not ADA compliant. The evaluation took place, I do want to compliment and the city staff for planning, and fire, and budget, and Public Works, and my office that worked for what I would consider data-driven process, as well as working with HRT. The three primary goals was that to make public transit an option of choice, again, to treat all riders with dignity and respect. We want to have an attractive, safe, clean, and inviting environment. Some of the considerations were really HRT's needs, their operational needs, the site capacity, the time to complete, the capital cost, the operating cost, and again, I'd mentioned access, safety, visibility. I will tell you that as we did the second round of analysis, those, the third and fourth bullet became somewhat of a driving force here, and that was the time to complete, as well as the capital cost. And we spent a lot of time, I will say, looking at the various sites, and consistently, the scoring came out with the Downtown Plaza site being the best site. So, again, the recommendation is consistent with what we provided you back in January. But I think we spent a great deal of time talking about the analysis, and not necessarily the operational needs of HRT, and why this is the preferred site and HRT's number one site. I will also say that during that public conversation, the community conversation, this was the preferred site of the riders. So, that's the one thing that we don't want to get lost in discussion tonight, is that what do the riders want, and what's good for them, because they are actually using the system on a daily basis. So, you know, with that said, you know, one of the keys to the recommendations were that this Downtown Plaza site, we own it, it meets both current and future needs, the capital and operating affordability versus some of the other sites that were provided for us. Again, I mentioned it's the top recommendation from HRT, and it's the site, preferred site for the users of transit. I'm going to turn it over to William. I think I have a picture behind me of the site, but William and I think Ray are going to tag team the operational needs piece. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Let me just say, Mr. Mayor, that was a counsel, I'm certainly pleased to be here before you. We know at Hampton Roads Transit, we have a lot to do in terms of improving our image, the cleanliness of bus stops, some of the operational issues. Certainly, we know a significant portion of our riders are transit dependent, but we've learned with light rail, the ability to, how to increase what we call choice riders, those that have an opportunity to ride a number of modes. And we certainly feel that part of our objective here is to improve our overall service level. That's important as relates to this transfer location, because I believe the number one issue in terms of encouraging more transit usage in our community is the Cedar Grove location. None of us would choose to go to that location if we didn't have to. And the recommendations here, I think, will address the issue of dignity and respect that all of our customers deserve, your citizens, our customers, as well as others in the region. I would like to call upon Ray Almaruso, our Chief of Planning and Development, who's worked hand in hand with your staff. And I certainly want to thank Mr. Jones and his entire staff. I mean, it's been, we've worked hand in glove, so we're certainly completely supportive of what is being presented to you this afternoon.
Good evening, council members, mayor, staff. Just to put in context the importance of the site, what Cedar Grove is today, and as we move to the new home. We operate different sized transfer facilities. We actually, we have 42 transfer facilities in the entire six-city service district. Cedar Grove is the number one transfer facility that provides a seamless connection for our customers. We move 6,500 passengers a day through that facility on an average weekday. There are 17 bus routes that come into Cedar Grove and serve five of the six-member cities that come in. We average on a typical weekday, 569 bus trips that terminate and then start their run out of Cedar Grove facility. On Saturdays, you can see 418 trips, and even on Sundays, 207 trips. During our peak operating periods in the morning and the afternoon, in two-hour windows, 50 buses an hour, per hour, come in and out of that facility. 25% of the customers that come to that facility have a downtown destination, the other 75% are making transfers to continue their trip to another destination. I have to say, it's definitely the top facility in terms of movement of people in our vehicles. As terms of our operational needs, it's very important to understand that in the new home, we would need to have 16 bays with three layover spaces to accommodate all the routes. That does include, looking down the road, the additional services that we would have between Norfolk and Portsmouth related to the Elizabeth River Crossing service. We need to have an orderly bus circulation pattern with controlled access points and egress points. Anyone that's visited the Cedar Grove site knows today how difficult it is for buses and pedestrians to move about that facility. Pedestrian pathways right now are not clearly marked, and often are friction points for the buses moving in and out of the facility. So, part of our operational needs is a safe environment for pedestrians, that minimizes conflicts between pedestrians and buses. We need space for customer amenities, and the city manager mentioned that, places for people to buy our fair media, fair sales, gather customer information, whether it's a schedule, or they have a question about the next bus, and even have the most simple things like a restroom, not only for the customers, but even for our operators. It needs to be visible from the street. Cedar Grove is not today. You have to have eyes from the street looking in and from adjacent properties. And then finally, walkable to downtown. The beauty of that is the closer we get into downtown, our customers can walk into downtown, the possibility of not having to expend money to have a special circulator back into downtown to provide that connection would go away as we get into downtown. Those are our operational needs, and I believe John is up next.
What was Cedar Grove? I don't remember what it was before it was Cedar Grove.
City-owned property that was just a service parking.
It was a parking.
Just a parking.
Yeah, I know it was a landfill, but I didn't know if, okay, so it was parked.
Dog site. No, it was, it was, actually, it was years ago. It's Virginia Power Site.
Yeah. But it was also the site for the dog, dog, dog catches.
Oh, right.
Yeah. You know, well, it fronted, it fronted Princess Anne Road, and one part of it was the, and part of it was the old National Guard Armory. The other part housed the dog catches, before they moved them out to, you know, Rabbit And it was a successful fire there, too. When the city decided, they had a successful fire there. And also, Richard Hassel used to have his operation there. He used to have it full of clothes and things for the needy. All of that was along that front of Princess Anne Road.
Good evening. I want to talk a little bit about the construction plan and schedule, just a little bit of orientation. This is our existing fire station number one. The bus facility, we'd go right next to it. Currently, the ABC store is located there, would have to be torn down. This is a Shell gas station and McDonald's. What the facility will consist of primarily is a covered plaza that you see here, is a waiting area for passengers, just an open area with a roof and a nice plaza. But also, we'll have some small buildings for restrooms, a small building for ticket sales and security. The bus driveways will need to be reinforced, as will some of the roads. I mentioned the demolition of the ABC store, a little bit of site utilities. And one of the things I want to talk about is there is a significant issue with pedestrian crossing of St. Paul's Boulevard. Next. You know, the primary consider, one of the primary problems we have is this is across St. Paul's Boulevard, and many of the passing, 25% of the passengers are going to downtown destinations and light rail station. To expect these passengers to go up to the Wood Street, Charlotte area, down to Market Street is not realistic. So, we will need a new signalized pedestrian crosswalk in there to get people across the street, and it's currently a problem, would be more of a problem if we don't deal with the transfer center. The drawing on the left shows the transfer station here and pedestrian paths to different areas downtown. And on the right, it shows the area of the bus transfer station, the intended area of the pedestrian crossing. We would close the median break there and put in a traffic signal and an improved crosswalk across there. The facility budget, you know, we're still in the early stages of developing what that is, and these are the approximate costs. The building is not that much itself, but there are some significant site work things due to the need to reinforce the pavement with the heavy use of buses and their heavy weight. You know, restrooms, the plaza itself, design, the pedestrian crossing is included in there as a little bit of demolition. Next. The schedule now is, it's going to take us a while to do the design. We have to go through some community input processes, and also our city review processes, as well as the design itself, and it'll take until next July. And then after awarding the contract, the construction will take approximately another year. Now, the problem with that is, you know, two years, two years to, to-
July.
Yes, we'd go out to bid in July, award the contract in October, and approximately a year to do the construction. Now, that's two years to get to where we, where we need to be, and in the meantime, we don't want to stay in Cedar Grove, so we're talking about an interim facility. So, the proposal is to move to an interim transfer center on Wood Street, which is just to the north of the site. I'll show you. Next. You know, this shows the bus, this shows how the bus routes would work at Wood Street. It's shown right here, just to the north of the Downtown Plaza. Next, please. And, you know, the location there is a good one, because there's relatively minor costs to get it ready, and we could do it rather quickly. The roadway is already concrete, the sidewalks and lighting are in good shape. There's easy access across St. Paul's Boulevard at Wood and Charlotte Street for the interim.
Could you go back, John? I want to see.
Yes, sir.
Where is it?
If you go two slides further, better one, next, one more. No, back, the other way. Okay. Here's Wood Street, the fire station, St. Paul's Boulevard, Brambleton Avenue up here. So, the idea would be the line of buses along Wood Street, as is shown here. You know, the street is concrete, it's in good shape. We would have to make some improvements, primarily installing bus shelters along the north side, some additional lighting, some temporary restrooms in the area back there. One downside of this is that we would need to restrict travel on Wood Street, so that we wouldn't allow non-HRT or fire vehicles to go on there for the two-year period. That will have an impact on some of the folks that are using that now, again, for the couple of year period until we get the permanent facilities. And we have coordinated with the fire department, would need to do a little traffic signal work to help them, also to get pedestrians across, across Wood Street. These are the, the advantage of this, a number of advantages to this, it's near the permanent location, so in terms of HRT setting up their bus routes and customers becoming familiar with them, it has an advantage. Near the light rail station at Monticello, it's, while it's near the site, it's away from the construction facilities. We have coordinated with the fire department at Wood Street. And the closure is one issue that we're going to have to deal with.
And before John goes forward, you know, the concept here is that we struggle with the word interim or temporary, but we're not going to replicate the conditions of Cedar Grove. So, we're going to deal with the visibility, we're going to deal with the safety, we're going to deal with the restrooms, we're going to deal with vending. This is just not moving one current, you know, environment to several blocks down. So, we're going to be very conscientious about that.
This again shows the location, you get the fire station number one, the buses would line up along Wood Street, they'd have good access from Church Street to Brambleton Avenue, as well as out on the St. Paul's, and the permanent facility would be located down here as we build. You know, the requirements involved, as Marcus said, restrooms are essential. We'd have to do some minor signal and pedestrian enhancements, some lighting and bus shelters. Estimated cost for the interim facility is about $200,000, and that's included in our overall estimate. And the idea would be to complete that relocation by next July. Now, the thing about that is HRT has a timeframe where they need to notify their customers, as well as their bus drivers, of changes in schedule, and so there's a point in July where they would do that. So, we're going to match up with that, and should be able to do that easily. Summary of the budget and the schedule, new facility design, starting right away, it can be complete next July. The interim facility would be built in that same timeframe, construction and a permanent facility to December of 2014, and the budget for designing construction is a range of four to five and a half million dollars. And we will seek federal and state grants if possible to assist with the funding project. Next steps are initiate the design, have discussions with the community, including Tidewater Park, the residents, DNC, riders, about the interim location, and also about the transfer center design, initiate the construction of the interim center. And also, we'll need to review the future downtown bus routes, including the net with the change to downtown, exactly what do we want to do there.
And I would add that that range at $4 million to $5.5 million is what we've talked about over the past year. The council approved the $4 million in the FY 2013 budget that's in there, and as John said, we're going to continue to look for grants, and our goal is to get it- it at that $4 million level or lower, which we've already approved.
My understanding was that $2 million grant was almost a slam dunk. Is that not right anymore?
We did not get that grant.
And I don't know that partly that it was, if we went up there, I personally spoke with the head of the Federal Transit Administration. I think we can continue to apply, but we would not, I mean, there isn't...
Yeah, nothing?
In the federal grant that we did not get awarded this year.
So is that totally our, our payment? HRT doesn't contribute to that?
That would be our payment. HRT has continued to partner with us, and they are seeking grants, as are we.
So they're now going to be like, St. Paul, one, two, like four, four lights between St. Paul and left where you go up on the Berkwood Bridge?
Yes, sir.
You do go out there in the afternoon and in the morning sometimes, right?
Have you been there between four and five p.m.?
That is a nightmare. You know, I, we've heard on this mayor, is this just...
It's certainly a bad situation, but...
A horrible situation now.
We have an issue right now with pedestrians going across St. Paul's Boulevard that we've been dealing with for a couple of years and have a project that, a few years ago, to put a crosswalk in there, so we'll have to work on it.
You have a fence going in there, and y'all, that just disappeared on.
No, there is still the project for the fence and the crosswalk. We've held up on that until we had a solution, knowing where the transfer station was going to go, so we didn't build it in the wrong place.
What was the fence? Prevent pedestrians?
Jailbreak coming across into the island.
Prevent pedestrians.
Coming all across, all over the place. It's already a nightmare.
Well, if I can recall, the, the old bus bus route from Charlotte when the transfer station was on Charlotte, it would make, they would make a right onto Monticello, then make another right onto Brambleton, and take another right onto St. Paul and keep down Brambleton or go up St. Paul's. And so, I don't see much change in the traffic pattern from where the old transfer station used to be and where the new transfer station will be. And so, I mean, they used to eventually...
I'm talking about pedestrian traffic as well, trying to get across St. Paul Boulevard. That play, I mean, if they had 4:30 what happened.
We have, we have good experiences with that as well, when we have concerts at the scope.
We don't have concerts during the rush hour.
Yeah, but they, they've had functions where they got to, they got to usher hundreds of people across a busy thoroughfare. I appreciate that, but, you know, I'm just stating the fact that they, we do have events where we have to get people from one side of St. Paul to the other side.
Maybe one or two during the rush hour? I mean, where, you know, when do you have them from?
No, the traffic, I see what you're saying, the traffic is really bad. I don't like the location either, but the traffic is bad. I mean, the people are driving down there, you know, they're going 45, 50 miles an hour. When there's a concert or an event down there, people are not driving that fast. They are, a lot of times, it's very congested, and people will, even at that, they'll dart out in front of, you know, cars and things like that. I, I, I don't know. I don't, I don't like the location. I like the station. I like what you're trying to do. I think it's very needed. I think it's, it's a great model in terms of what you're trying to do. I just don't like the location.
The buses be making right turns to go into service, or will they be making the left turn right? When they leave, like say, for instance, when they're leaving Wood Street, would they be making right turns for all of their access to the different routes? Or will they have an occasion to make a left turn across St. Paul Boulevard, which would be three lanes of traffic?
There are four routes and one max route that have to make the left turn to go into downtown. All the other routes are really going to go across Wood, on the other side of St. Paul's and Charlotte Street, and then make a right on Monticello, or make immediate right on this northbound St. Paul's to go back up to Brambleton.
And what timeframes would these, your max bus?
Four to 6:00 P.M. 50 buses from 4:00 to 5:00, 50 buses from 5:00 to 6:00.
Say that again, Ray, how many?
Oh, the peak periods are in the afternoon. 50 buses from 4:00 to 5:00 P.M. leave Wood Street, and 50 buses from 5:00 to 6:00 P.M. leave Wood Street. The routes that go southbound on St. Paul's that need to make the left are the 6, the 8, the 45 going to Portsmouth, and then max route 960.
Every site that we looked at, pedestrians either had to cross St. Paul's Boulevard or Brambleton Avenue, if there's anything inside, or there somebody have a pedestrian crossing problem regarding that site.
As you know, I feel very strongly that this is the best, worst location, but let's just work with this one. Tell me, on this slide we have, show me what would be there at St. Paul's Quadrant as proposed, which would interface with the transfer station. What do we have designed to be there at this point?
You mean in terms of the pedestrian crosswalk or the stations?
No, I'm talking about the whole development that we have behind the transfer station that will be St. Paul's Quadrant, yeah.
Frank Duke, I think, could speak better to that.
So that slide that you have on...
You could go, actually, the slide that shows the layout of the...
Right, that's what I meant.
What we have brought, the St. Paul's Plan calls for throughout this area, which we have called the commercial area, it is going all the way back to Church Street. It's intended to be a mix of retail, office, and residential uses. As you go further north, up back to...
I'm just interested, Frank, in right adjacent to the transfer station.
This median area, what we have looked at is, it would be potentially retail coming back into this area, and then potentially office up immediately behind it, so that we're not anticipating that you would have significant residential immediately around this. But when we've looked at this, we don't believe that locating a bus transfer facility in this area disrupts the vision of the St. Paul's Plan if it is well-designed, if it provides security, and if it provides the amenities so that the bus riders are treated with the respect that we're anticipating we're going to be able to achieve throughout this area.
So lighting and noise and exhaust wouldn't be a problem?
Light, not, the only reason I would be concerned about the exhaust or lighting is if you tried to get residential immediately around it, but these are not the areas where we have designated for the residential to be immediately adjacent to it. That's why we're saying the residential is proposed more up along Butte Street, and then further to the west, or, I'm sorry, to the east in the quadrant area.
The only other comment I...
Facing the church. You've got, you've got historic churches up here, so what we were looking at were town home types developments in this area to try to better respect the historic character of those churches.
The other comment I had, because I think Marcus is obviously correct in saying that we need to canvass the riders, but you started out with your discussion saying you want this to be choice. So we want to be beyond those that are riding now. And we all, several of us sat in the meeting that we had with the residents and, and people that were, the stakeholders who were very strongly against this. So I think we need to look at that both ways, not only the riders now, but ones that we hope to engage and to recognize that this is not the preferred location.
Oh, you could, you could, you could saturate a meeting with the potential riders who have no desire or intention to ride the bus and come up with an overwhelming decision that it's the wrong place. So taking the residents in consideration, you know, is very important, but I would hate to see meetings saturated with people who don't want it there. And then we come away saying, well, we don't want it there, and the people who are making all of the discussion and complaints and disdain are people who don't have any intention of riding.
Well, no, there was no effort to saturate this meeting. This meeting was open, and I was there, and there were people that were in the downtown community, and there were people that were riders there. So there was no effort to saturate anything, and this group was there.
At that point, but I would hate to see...
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. That's the only word I have.
I've got three, three points I want to make. The first one is, you know, at the retreat, we, we talked about this somewhat. When I, when we left the retreat, I thought about it, at length, and took this discussion, this very discussion that we're having. We all have vehicles. We, we all, none of us here use public transportation on a daily basis. What we, what we do use is our vehicles every day. And you get inside your vehicle every day. How many days you go to work, whether it be 250 days a year or 190 days a year, you get in that vehicle and you go to work. These people get on that bus every day, and they have to endure the transfer station as it exists today, regardless of rain, sleet, snow, or hail. They're out there every day.
I don't think anybody's against it.
Let me finish my comment. Enduring the element, because that is their sole source of transportation, okay? And so, I, I think it's incumbent upon us by, we've been talking about this for eight years, you know, at least six years. We've been talking about that. We're in our second manager, and we're still having this discussion, you know, about location. What I do know is this, the St. Paul Quadrant is not etched in stone, and it's not going to happen within the next four or five years. And so, in terms of changing or looking at, this transfer station will be here long before the St. Paul's Quadrant will be developed. So you have ample time to develop the types of mixed use and quality life amenities around this facility. Thirdly, I just think that we need to approach this the same way we approach light rail. We talk about the opportunities that exist along the light rail line to create development opportunities, because we know that the way that we generate revenue is not by the train itself, it's what we do in and around the train that will create additional revenue for the city. So when I look at the bus transfer station, then I look at it the same way. He alluded to the number of people that transfer or come to this, this particular location every day. Now, it would be a, it would be a crime if we do nothing to create economic, economic stimuli in this particular location, whether it be some type of convenience store, whether we have, create the opportunity for somebody to create a business in that area. So I just think that we have to look at that component the same way we look at light rail. If you're talking about how do we, we, we make up the cost of money that we're putting out, or how do we even put a dent in that? If we're not generating any type of opportunity to generate revenue, then we're going to miss it. But I think, how many people you say are buses?
65, 100 people.
That's true wherever you put it.
Right, but six, I understand that, but...
That's true wherever you, you could bottleneck that, that's worse than handling.
No, 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 you don't have, you don't have to bottleneck that.
You don't go in and out of there during the rush hour.
When you look at the facility itself, there's enough critical mass within the development that they have right there to create something to be able to buy newspaper, soft drinks, and so on and so forth in that particular location. If you go to Hampton, you go to places like Charlotte, the big cities that have these transfer stations, they are a destination. We're not trying to put a Band-Aid on something. If we're trying to get people, everyday people like you and me, to get out our cars and use our arterial modes of transportation, then those are the types of things that we're going to have to do. We cannot put a Band-Aid on them.
We're all in agreement about the concept of it.
Spend $4 million, let's do it right. That's all I'm saying.
I'm all about it. I'm just telling it's the wrong place.
Let me, I know you have budgetary concerns about this.
I do, and I think $5 million is a lot of money, too.
But what's the right location?
But I mean...
How about up the front of Cedar Grove? How about the bus station?
It should be downtown. People should be able to get off the bus and be downtown, not get off the bus...
Get off the bus and get on the train and be downtown.
Not get off the bus and have to catch another bus and be downtown.
But wait, wait a minute, let me try to get, managers looked at all, you're right, a number of, a number of options where you could put this transfer station, and as is HRT. All of them have pluses and minuses to it. They, at least the administration and HRT have decided that this is the right site for the buses. Now, you may not agree with them, okay? And it also has budgetary implications, that this could be done within the budget that's been proposed, presented, and in fact, we've actually adopted. Is there some, is there a site in proximity to this that you think could, could work, Barkley? I mean, because right...
You've got the bus station over there. What I, we're looking at the front of Cedar Grove.
Which bus station?
Greyhound.
That would require...
We're down at Harbor Park, Mr. Jones.
I think they've looked at all that stuff.
They've looked at it, and they've said...
Tell them the cost, you got the numbers. Tell them the cost associated with Harbor Park. And let me see if they're willing to bite that bullet.
Well, tell me the cost of doing it wrong the first time. You do it right, and that's what makes sense monetarily. And you make it so that we are an interconnected transportation hub. You've got the perfect opportunity to do it right, instead of saying, sure, it's miserable that this has been put off for as long as it has, but to rush it because we're, we've got to do it now and then have to redo it again. I mean, our team, when they presented Harbor Park, they said, that's a possibility for later. That was what was presented to us from our city.
They, they put, they gave you...
Why are we waiting?
They gave you the pretty pictures. And I always, I always say, give me the numbers, give me the numbers to be able to justify how you were going to do that. Create a multimodal station down at Harbor Park with one way in and one way out, okay? And all of the other activities that you got going on during the course of the year, okay? Baseball and so on and so forth.
Versus traffic every day, four to five.
Baseball, okay, baseball.
Every day.
Baseball.
Five-day game.
Future, future, future housing, okay?
At Harbor Park, Harbor Park. At Harbor Park? So that's going to come before St. Paul's Quadrant?
No, 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 listen to, listen to what I'm saying. I, what are the numbers?
Yeah, if you will, and Ray will help us greatly, can we deal with, address Harbor Park and then the Greyhound site, because there are two components there. There is money, but there's also operations. So, Ray, if you would, okay.
Part of, and part of the team effort that we did with the city staff, and still the operational needs for HRT buses in terms of circulation and getting buses out on schedule. This is the starting point for those 17 routes that go to those five of the six cities that carry the number of people I pointed out. You leave the location late, then that route dribbles along late until you get to the destination point where you're very late. Harbor Park has a lot of friction factors. You have a freight track, it has two access points, Park Avenue or Water Street. There is no way to come down Tidewater Drive, make a left turn onto Hull Street to get to Harbor Park presently. You have a freight track that has very frequent coal train movements, that 100-car length coal trains. A bus coming out of Harbor Park can't go that direction on schedule. They come all during the course of the day, even during the peak periods. Water Street, right now, the way it runs, has no curb and gutters, a single lane in each direction, and can only process so many buses. The buses can't even come down Tidewater Drive. Then to lay out that kind of layout, and you can see the land that's required, you would lose several hundred parking spaces, surface parking spaces that are supposed to be dedicated to our tide baseball operations. How do you replace those surface spaces to put down this footprint? The only answer, we came up with a structured parking facility. Now you have the cost of a structured parking facility to replace the spaces lost because of putting down the needed circulation element for the buses. So those are deficiencies at Harbor Park. Poor access, you can improve the access, but you would have to expend money on infrastructure and roadway improvements, cut in a left turn lane on southbound Tidewater Drive to get to Hull Street, improve Water Street to a fully, a street that's able to carry the buses that doesn't flood. What do you do? You can't even really bring the buses out across the freight tracks because you would blow the schedule, basically. We looked at the great...
Ray, wouldn't that happen with cars that are lined up on St. Paul's and the buses can't exit because of traffic on St. Paul's?
Today, we run down St. Paul's, the same routes I mentioned are still running down St. Paul's at 4:00 and 5:00 in the afternoon.
Running down them, but turning into them, I mean, turning into a busy street is different than running down the street. And secondly, wouldn't there be a plan somewhere to reline Hull Street anyway?
One thing, one thing I've noticed recently, and I was telling the police chief, and I thought it was great, at Waterside Drive now, you know, when it's peak traffic, they have a police officer there. I think also maybe at City Hall Avenue. Could it be the same thing here? When you know you're going to have peak traffic hours in the afternoon, you could, you could have a, a traffic officer there making sure that an intersection is clear, not only for the buses, but in the event that you, you know, have to get your, your fire equipment out. So as I'm looking at it, it seems to me that if you, if we had an officer there at St., at, I guess, at, at St. Paul Boulevard, if I look at it this way, which, which way is the, the bus is going to be going out this way?
Towards St. Paul's.
They're going to be going towards St. Paul's.
They're going to be coming towards there. Well, they'll go back out this way and come down Hull Street.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
They're circulating around.
Yeah, okay.
Come out and come out.
So we could make sure that each day at peak hours, we had a traffic officer there... there, whether it was, um, somebody, a uniformed officer, or just, uh, an auxiliary officer to make sure that the intersection was not blocked as far as buses are concerned or, uh, you know, vehicular traffic. And we actually need that right now at a lot of our intersections downtown to make sure that the vehicles are not blocking those intersections. So, that might seem like a Band-Aid fix, but it'd be something we could do to make sure that those buses are circulating, that if you have five or six buses coming out, that we're gonna hold that traffic up and get those buses out.
And that's certainly a mitigation you can do to control that. We do make left turns.
Traffic can be stacked up so far back.
The city staff has costs.
Can we, can we talk about, I mean, at, at Harbor Park, there are also other additional costs associated with it.
It would exceed twenty million.
It would, it's, okay, and that's because you would need, um, structured parking, maybe, a road.
Well, just, just a road, yes, sir.
Want to spend that buck?
Now, but we've been steered to this point from day one. We also originally talked about two to four million, but don't worry about it because we don't get a two-million-dollar grant. We gotta put this in there because it's gotta be a placeholder, just, okay, now that's gone away. I've just heard that. I think that.
We all just heard it.
Well, I only want the, the location involved, and I travel up and down St. Paul Boulevard. It is bumper to bumper in the morning and in the afternoon on a good day, people trying to get out, down to the, down to the portal. And I think it's wrong, I think it's a wrong location, I think it's way too much money wherever we put it.
Have we, have we, like the, um, was it the Golden Triangle, the old Hojo Motel? They tore out the back of their hotel, the, and that's just a parking lot now. Have we thought about engaging them? That's close to Scope, it's right across the street from, uh, the Light Rail station. Um, you know, maybe there's a land swap opportunity here that we can move a hotel and put it in St. Paul's quadrant where somebody might wanna be closer to the mall and downtown. Maybe that, that landowner would wanna engage us in, um, in something, but, I mean, I, I just think that we're taking the easy fix and, on this. I don't like the location either. Um, and I had asked, um, you know, about the parking lot on the corner of Bramleton and St. Paul's, and last time I was told it was too small. Uh, but I'm looking at a map here, I've been playing around with my map, trying to find different locations, but what, what are they doing with the back half of that hotel that they tore down? It's just, I mean, that's a, a huge space that is convenient and right by Light Rail. Have we engaged and looked at that?
They tore that down for aesthetic purposes, I believe, and I don't think they want those buses there.
What about the front car city road? You got Exeter by acres over there.
It needs to be downtown.
What I will say is that all of the, um, sites that you're talking about now were discussed. Um, I guess we call the, the hotel site the Golden Triangle. But even with that, it would, for this to fit, it would include tearing the hotel down.
I, I, I'm looking at a map, Marcus, and I just, I don't agree with that. I'm looking at, I mean, I taught maps for eight years in scale, and that site where they just tore it down is bigger than where you're, you're putting it now.
We're talking about in front of the hotel, and we, go, go ahead.
Talking about the back half on Brampton.
Up on the Brampton.
You'll take his pool.
But that's their property though. That's their property.
I understand that, but there's an opportunity here. We have a future development that you can engage a landowner and that, that site has not been successful in moving them closer to, to downtown. And maybe we get something out, else out of it where a bus station would be better there, but they might like the hotel site somewhere else, uh, in the St. Paul's area.
That hotel has changed hands.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't do it well.
How would you like to proceed? We've been doing this for, for at least ten months, um, and we're back at the same conclusion. We've had the folks from HRT that are professionals that deal with the operations. We have planning staff, we've had public safety, we've had public work, we've had everybody around the table. I, one thing I can assure you is that, um, we've looked at this criteria, it's almost a dozen different criteria. We could talk about the Greyhound site, we could talk about Harbor Park. It's not necessarily just the dollars, it's also how this will operate over time. And while we can continue to look at other sites, I, I believe that we've presented to you the best site.
In the conversations that we've had with the riders, and I totally respect that because I drive my car every day, um, have we talked to the homeowners across the street in the flats and condos across the street who bought their homes not anticipating having the noise and smog of a bus transfer station across the street from them?
Sure. I can't, um, speak to the noise and smog, which I believe either John or Ray spoke to, um, but, but I would like for all of us to maybe agree to one concept, it, it is not Cedar Grove. It, it's an asset. It is something that's going to be different than what we've ever had in the city before. And that's the beginning premise. I think there's a lot of, um, good discussions we can have based on it, but we are not going to replicate Cedar Grove, and we're going to have something that is an asset, that's a part of our transit system. But we have had discussions with, with them, and they were not, my understanding is that they would like it to be somewhere else.
Sound like the same conversations we had around Light Rail. Out in my backyard, too much noise, too many people gonna be hanging out. Now, totally different than what people anticipate. This will be too.
Well, I'm prepared to support the administration's, uh, recommendation. I, um, I don't know that we've got a schedule for any sort of, maybe, um, what we should do is, um, is bring on some sort of resolution for the, at least for the administration's, uh, guidance and that would, uh, vote this thing up or down. I, I know there are cost concerns, I know there are operational concerns. We get a, a recommendation from the administration, and then we'll just, you know, we'll see where to go unless somebody, I mean, Barkley and Teria, I don't think the Harbor Park thing is going to work. Maybe this isn't going to work, but that's, that's at least, that is a multi-million-dollar, uh.
But I think you have, yeah, another traffic signal. Even if you moved over to, what is it, Wood Street comes by the fire station, don't we own the Hearst building? I mean, if you could use an existing traffic signal and slide it over where that temporary is and just take it over more. I'm not trying, I don't, I'm not against making it a good experience to ride the bus.
Sure, with nobody's.
I am against what I know, I go up and down four, five times a day and see there. If you had another traffic signal, people trying to walk across and stop and put a policeman out there and wave, it is just chalk and block now coming in and out. The quality of life was like for people using that road. And then they're gonna push over downtown into other streets to try to avoid it, and you just created a mess if you had a traffic signal there.
It, it is a traffic signal at Wood.
And another one.
There is, it would, but not, he's talking about putting that there in.
They go out through Wood Street. They don't come out right there.
They're not coming out on, on St. Paul?
No. They come out on St. Paul, but they come out through Wood, right?
You said you were gonna put a traffic signal on a crosswalk.
Okay, let's, let's get that sound.
It does come out of Wood Street.
He's putting a traffic light.
There's already one there.
There's already traffic.
I knew it.
They told me they were adding a traffic signal.
Do it again, John.
A new pedestrian crosswalk here. Because I forced the, no, no.
The buses come out.
The buses come out Wood Street or go up Church Street.
Is there gonna be a traffic signal where the pedestrian crossing in?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I said.
As you were saying, additional traffic.
Exactly what I said. You add another one, you got St. Paul.
The other option is try and force them to go up there.
Scope to Wood Street to there, to, you've got five lights.
Okay, so if the, your concern is the new traffic light. If that went away and we tried to break the pedestrian.
How you gonna get people, I, I don't like locations, but how you gonna get the people?
If, even if, even if the, uh, you, you got, you have to do something to get the passengers over, but you're talking about a hundred and twenty seconds, maybe able to get them across, uh, you know, two streets. You're not talking about a, a regular light cycle.
I'm talking about, just go down there and take a ride in three and a half to noon.
I, I know, I know what it's a three.
What that light does is permit pedestrians to cross.
Right, right.
You're not talking about.
Stops traffic, but you got two-hundred yards of traffic, two-hundred yards, I mean, you've got four lanes there, Paul, I'm telling you. You're gonna push people back over to Monticello, and they're gonna be coming down through the Light Rail, I, you know, if you, you know, if, if you push it over to Wood Street and just use that, it wouldn't be, you know, the best situation, but it'd be better than that.
As best we can, the timing of that signal will have to be aligned up with when you have a red light down there, Marcus.
Yeah, you're not gonna change my mind if we're not gonna create havoc in a place that there's already havoc. You're not gonna change my mind on that. So, I, I've traveled it too many times.
What is gonna stop traffic? I mean, I'm just, you know, I know it's a pedestrian crossing and all of that, but we have several pedestrian crossings, and people just keep on zooming, I mean, that's what's gonna stop it.
Red traffic signal, enforcement.
So, there's actually a light there?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Stop light.
Yes, ma'am. Which was the prior approved project.
One in Wood and one in Wood.
Yeah, there, there was a prior approved project that, uh, was, was approved a few years ago to build a fence and put a mid-block crossing here across St. Paul's because of the problems we have currently.
We lost our lead.
So, um, so that's the only issue you have with it?
I, I don't think the location is, is the right location either, but that's a killer for me is the traffic. You're splitting fifty or whatever, how many buses you talk about and how many people that you're stopping that thing and, and, and push traffic west, it's gonna, it's already a nightmare. They're gonna be cutting through, getting on City Hall or whatever, trying to get on the interstate and winding through Main Street to try to get down.
Mr. Manager, when do you plan on bringing a resolution to this on this matter?
We could bring that, um, at the next voting meeting.
All right, if we don't have any other discussion, then we can move on to the next item.
What I will do in the interest of time is let's move to the two agenda items that you will vote on tonight.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members, members of council, it's, uh, always a pleasure to be before you. Tonight I'll be presenting, uh, a pilot program in our parking enterprise. Um, it's called Top Deck, and you may have noticed, uh, for some time that the top of our parking decks, uh, for the vast majority of the year remain empty. Um, we.
Um, Cal, I, I know that you saw this at the retreat. At that time, we thought we could do it administratively. The reason that we're doing a very short presentation tonight is that it does require a council, an ordinance from council.
I believe the operative word was short. Um, uh, as we've shown here, our three, uh, the top of three of our garages, uh, we've developed a program, uh, we're going to, or seeking to pilot, uh, involving three of our garages for a total of three hundred spaces. Um, this is in response to, uh, our concern that we've heard from, uh, businesses downtown as well as others regarding, uh, parking being an impediment to businesses looking to locate downtown, as well as a way that we could increase our revenue by having those top-floor spaces, uh, actually utilized and generating revenue for our system. We developed a pilot program with three tiers, uh, one, two, three. Each tier has a hundred spaces in it, but each tier has a specific target, if you will. Uh, tier one is looking for new businesses to Norfolk. Um, with fifty or less employees, one of the things that we've built into the pilot program is the ability, uh, for a new business, uh, that is seeking to take advantage of tier one, the ability to lock in parking or this rate, uh, which is forty dollars for tier one for a two-year period. And tier two, it looks for the same smaller businesses, fifty or less employees, uh, but as opposed to tier one, which is for new businesses, tier two's for existing. Tier three looks to, uh, the next step, if you will, those businesses that have fifty-one to a hundred employees. One of the things that we've structured in is that the city manager has the ability, based on our actual experience, once we roll the program out, if we find that two tiers are fully utilized and we're not seeing any activity in one tier, we have, the manager has the ability to shift the hundreds, if you will, so that it's where the demand is. Uh, but in no instance will it be more than the three hundred spaces that we've identified. Uh, each tier has its own pricing structure, as you would think. The new businesses has the lowest, uh, forty dollars a month, uh, sixty and seventy, so forth. Um, these are full-access parking. We're gonna have the parking spaces nested, so there will be a control card, uh, that will get swiped access on the ground floor with a time frame, as well as another swipe to get onto the top deck, uh, and in the reverse to get out of the top deck and then out on the ground floor. I mention that detail because one of the things that we're concerned about, um, is enforcement. And as we look to enforcement, uh, we've developed a structure that we believe will clearly communicate, uh, to the users, um, that there is a discount being offered for their agreeing to park on the top floor. Said differently, they need to park on the top, top floor. If you use your access card to gain entry on the first floor and do not park on the top floor, first offense would be a warning. Second offense, I'm sorry, um, when you swipe on the first floor and come in, there's a time limit to get to the roof. If you don't get to the roof in that time, you've gotta go back down because the question is, the way the technology is set up, is that if you haven't gotten there in time, you're not gonna get there. Um, when you try and leave the garage and swipe your card, it will not let you out because you never got to the top deck. In that instance, uh, everyone would have to pay for the various garages the full daily rate, um, for that first offense, as well as the second offense. But in addition to the full daily rate to gain, uh, to exit the garage, the second offense would, uh, the vehicle would be ticketed, uh, thirty dollars. The third offense, we would deactivate the card and notify the company that they're no longer a part of the Top Deck program.
You know, that eliminates people from going in, parking somewhere and not getting to the third floor.
Top floor.
Okay.
And if, and that's an error, if they don't, when they try and leave, their card won't work, they'll have to go to an attendant, and they don't have a ticket, so they would pay the lost ticket fee, which is the max daily rate.
How does that work in the garages that are completely automated?
Um.
Because we've got nine of them, right, which are.
They're not fully automated.
Okay.
There's one lane, that's those nine that just came online.
Okay.
Um, and the three garages that we're looking at, um, Bush, West Poom and Bank are not fully automated. They, they each have one lane.
Okay.
Does the automation prevent somebody who's not a Top Deck participant from parking on the top deck?
They would not have a card to swipe to gain entry to the top deck.
So, there would be a separate swipe on the top deck as well?
Yes, one on the ground and one on the top floor. And actually, on the top floor, it's also a swipe to get out of the top floor. Um, I believe the ordinance, uh, is, uh, up for your consideration this evening. Uh, if anyone has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them for you.
I really appreciate the work that you've all done on this. This is something that the downtown community has been pushing for, for a long time. I know it took a lot of work to do, and so I, I really thank you for getting this done.
The other issue we wanted to give you a quick briefing on is the proposed zoning text amendment you have dealing with the hours of operation for ABC establishments. The reason we wanted to give you a briefing on this is because we have dealt with this issue several times over the past year, so we wanna make sure everyone understands of what we're doing. Uh, what this ordinance would do, if it is approved, is it would eliminate the restriction we currently have by code on the hours of operation for any ABC establishment that is located within one hundred feet of a single-family residence in a single-family zoning district. It would maintain the prohibition on the hours of amplified noise, amplified sound outside because the real issue that we run into with, with the establishments that are this close to a residential zoning district is a noise issue. That's the issue where we've had the complaints. So, what we're proposing is keep exactly what we currently have, no amplified sound outside after ten PM during the week and after eleven PM on Fridays and Saturdays, thinking that would give residents in the area peace, uh, as the night went on. Uh, just to give you some background on what we've done here, prior to two thousand and eleven, we had no policy on this. Everything was done on a case-by-case basis. And after getting complaints from citizens that city council was inconsistent in how they applied this, we were asked to develop standards. So, we developed standards restricting the hours of operation if the ABC. So, we developed standards restricting the hours of operation if the ABC establishment was in 100 feet of a single-family residential zoning district. And that was adopted a year ago, September of last year. Um, had some issues with that, and where we, staff was directed to revise that to limit that restriction to be within 100 feet of a, a single-family property that was developed in a single-family residential zoning district. So, that was, uh, adopted in June of this year, and then this past July, we were asked to revise it again, to essentially go back to City Council, do, dealing with this issue on a case-by-case basis, which is what this ordinance would do. Staff has recommended approval based on consistency with the general plan, as well as council direction, and the Planning Commission has recommended approval by a 4-0.
So, this be on a case-by-case basis, going back to the old?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Frank, um, two questions. The first one is, if there is a vacant lot next to one of these establishments, but it's zoned residential, do the same rules apply?
No, it has to be developed.
Okay, and my other question is, I've noticed that, um, some of the votes coming out of the Planning Commission are going back down again. I thought we had appointed some new people.
You have.
Okay.
Um, the issue we run into is sometimes not everyone can be there for the entire meeting, and so sometimes that people have to leave early, and then on a number of the ones that are not for text amendments, because of the members of the Planning Commission and who they are, uh, they are attorneys who represent development issues, so in some cases, the attorneys have to abstain from voting because of a conflict, they are realtors who have represented the people that are involved, so they also would have to abstain, so that's why at times you get these low votes.
Just that, it just bothers me because we rely on the Planning Commission for some of our most important votes, and we just don't get an accurate picture sometimes of, you know, I.
I, I think we have a very good Planning Commission right now, and I'd like to express my appreciation to you for the people that you have appointed.
Have you guys thought about changing the times?
We have discussed it.
Okay.
And I think we get, generally get very good attendance, it's a little harder sometimes in the summer because people do take vacations.
Uh, Mayor and Council, the, um, senior disabled real estate actually programs have pretty heavy lift, uh, and I think that 10 minutes may be a bit much. We do have the recycling that was, again, another tap at the retreat, it's good news. I don't know whether or not, um, you'd like to just end now, or, um, give an update on where we are with the recycling program.
First of all, I'm sorry I got up and left a moment ago, but, um, um, the, did we decide that what we're gonna do on the bus station is bring it on for, for like some form of, a formal vote that would give the administrations recommendations?
Yes.
But all I would ask is that, I don't think it's enough to vote, I know I, um, maybe this is a, I don't know how you, this will be received, but, um, if, if you don't like this location, then I would hope that when you come in here to vote on this thing, that we all, I mean, that you're willing to support something, and then the funds to make it happen as well. I mean, not, it's not just enough to, to say no, because we, this thing really hasn't been up on the table for a long, long time, and so if you don't like this location, then help us get the funds for another location somehow, to make something work, and this, and at the same time, you know, I think it's pretty weighty, that the professionals have said, this is their, their conservative opinion, I don't, I mean, I would, um, sorry that it's, it's been a difficult call, these are difficult facilities to, uh, locate in a very busy downtown, there're gonna be pluses and minuses regardless of where you put this thing, but you, but we have to, we gotta move on with it somehow, so, as if we voted for it next, and the next time we have a recorded vote, it's still gonna take us two years to get the thing finished, so I would give a lot of consideration to, however you feel, please come prepared to support something, or if it's not this location, another location, and be willing to appropriate the money that will allow us to get this thing done within a period of time, so we don't just fall right back to square one.
I, I agree with that, but I would like a cost breakout on, on Harbor, Harbor Park, excuse me.
With Cedar Grove, did they ever consider, as Barkley was suggesting, moving it to the front, and HRT running like the net buses directly to a Light Rail station from, I mean, is this?
I think they've looked at everything, I mean, the administration can confirm that they can.
So, just like you said, if a person is trying to get to work downtown, this is our service industry people, and they got to get off the bus at Cedar Grove to get on a net bus to take them to a Light Rail station, they gotta get to work on time, too. And so, you know, we, I, I know Tommy and Angela, you know, you guys, you haven't been around, we initially started having these conversations, but, you know, there were people that never knew the, the transfer station, that, they never knew it was on Charlotte. There are people that never knew that it, that the transfer, they thought it was a bus stop, but they never knew that that was the actual transfer station on Charlotte. You didn't have any problems, you know, when that transfer station was on Charlotte. They moved it to a problematic area. The people that ride those buses are not problematic. And so, to me, it always, we, we've been having the discussion in terms of, this needs to be downtown, these people are part of our community, they're part of the fabric of our society, and they make most of our hotels, and the businesses go downtown, you know.
Maybe you should've fixed it before we got on council, and we would have worried about it.
Tried to, tried to, but you know what, we're here today, and unless one of you guys can, you know, can, can come up with another solution, other than saying this is not the right location, you know, then, you know, I, I, like the mayor said, put it on the tape, and let it be vetted out. You know, you, you, you heard the cost analysis associated with Harbor Park, but I respect you, Dr. Whibley, and you should have that information, you know. And so, uh, at the end of the day, but I, I do believe that, that the people that use public transportation deserve this body to make a decision yesterday. It's already gonna take two years to build it, you know, but we need to make a decision. That's the part, that's the way I feel, it's been out there too long.
Can I get a copy of that call stuff for myself?
Sure.
Okay, well, unless there are any other comments, then we can take a break and start right at seven.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have recycling downtown businesses, is that what we're, just can you give me a, a quick overview, or you don't wanna spill the beans?
It's a piece of the new contract for us to explore.
And what about with businesses, are we gonna have it for, um, businesses, that they'd be able to recycle restaurants and things all over our city?
That, that's something we want to explore, see how we.
So, it's not happening yet?
Not, this, this issue's just converting our in-house recycling service to contract, those other things, I think we're still.
Well, we all signed up for our perks, so that's exciting. You could go and get the harvest, don't you think, on our post-up?